Okay.
I'll call the meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Heitman, McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries four zero.
All right, Evelyn, I think we are ready whenever you are.
Okay, I'm here to show you some slides that really kind of summarize what was a 50-plus page report. So there's a, there is a lot that is in the report, obviously, that won't be on the PowerPoint, but this is a summary, so I can explain to the board and to Dr. Schutte, you know, what was in the overall report and what the main points were in the overall audit. And you can go to the next slide. So I was the lead auditor on this audit team. All of my work was looked at by Enspira, by the executive staff at Enspira, which is routine. I have worked on audits before for school districts, particularly anything having to do with social media and website content. That has been my specialty in the past. And then for Marshalltown, I did the entire audit. Go ahead, Adam. So a communication audit really is a GPS. It's a guide for you. One thing I want to stress, and I talk a lot about in the audit report itself, is that this is both a short-term and a long-term guide. And I emphasize long-term because I think that many things, it can be overwhelming when you read through the ultimate audit, and many things, you know, honestly cannot be implemented until, you know, two years into something. Or if you're looking at an overall strategy, it may take you a couple of years to get that strategy together. So I did want to emphasize that. Next slide. So it's a comprehensive assessment of the communication efforts of the district now and the effectiveness of those efforts. It's a snapshot of perceptions about the school, the district, and its leadership. And that's probably the most important part of the audit process is perceptions, gauging perceptions, meeting with focus groups, and talking at length to them. And I did meet with a number of focus groups and had very, very long thoughtful conversations with different segments of the community. It's also a tool. It provides you with baseline research to evaluate your progress and a framework for developing some kind of communication plan. And you'll see in these slides that I talk about, oh, gosh, my guess would be about a half dozen important communication plans. So this is a framework for that, okay? And you sort of need to take one thing at a time and set your priorities. Next slide, Adam. So what we did was Adam provided me with a lot of material, a lot of links, publications, policies, goals, campaigns. I looked at different campaigns. Media coverage was really important. You guys do get a lot more media coverage than I usually see in where I used to be in New York. Websites, your social media, and a lot more. Next slide. So what I did was I interviewed Dr. Schutte. I interviewed Adam, obviously. And then we had focus groups with key stakeholders. There were 10 focus groups held during a period about, a two-week period in April. Small business leaders, large business leaders, support staff, separate from teachers, and then I did teachers. Building principals and administrators was one group. Hispanic parents was another group with an interpreter. Students in grades five through eight, high school students, Southeast Asian parents with interpreters. We had three interpreters in the Zoom. So you can imagine what normally would have been a one-hour focus group turned into a two-hour focus group. And finally, parents of young children. Next slide. So here are the key findings based on what I heard during focus groups and what I saw in looking and researching Marshalltown. MCSD prides itself as a multicultural and welcoming school district, something to be really proud of. And I heard that from many, many people. There's the successful dual-language program. Focus groups of Hispanic and Southeast Asian parents all supported the schools, especially Hispanic parents, and were confident, expressed confidence, that their children were receiving a solid education within the available resources that the district has. Next slide. Recent capital projects helped have helped to raise the district's profile. I don't know many high schools that have pickleball courts in this country, so. And also the roundhouse renovations. Internal communications seems to require more attention and more strategic focus. I heard a lot from the staff about that. The website is not robust, and Adam and I have agreed on that. It needs to address some pretty serious issues, including translation, its mobile responsiveness. If you look at it on a phone, there's a lot of scrolling involved, a lot of pinching, and trying to make things larger. And there are mobile apps out there, many mobile app companies that will do that for you. And then probably most important is ADA accessibility. Many districts, a district in particular in New York where I used to work, was fined by the federal government for not being ADA accessible. I can't remember what the fine was, but it was pretty hefty. But the worst thing was that the federal government took down their website. So for a period of about six months, the district had no website until they made it ADA accessible. And I can explain that in a little bit more detail if you'd like. It is in the report, and I do have a lot of links about ADA accessibility. But it can have some pretty stringent, you know, you can, you can be punished by the federal government for not being ADA accessible on your website. Next slide. So observations, these are observations based on me and based on focus group comments. The work of the Director of Communications is acknowledged and respected by most focus group participants. He's a member of the superintendent's cabinet, or whatever you might call it. He, that is something that's really important, doesn't happen everywhere. A lot of times, your communications person will be left out of the loop. And I feel like Adam is not left out of the loop, which is a very good thing. It's an acknowledgement of the importance of communicating whatever is going on in the school district and of being transparent. Stakeholders noted that the brand of the district seems unclear and outdated. And when I talk about the brand, I'm not just talking about the Bobcat or the logo. What I'm talking about is what is the district's identity? What is its brand? They're aware of the Bobcat as the mascot, but they appear confused about what the district brand is or should be. And, you know, it is, it has evolved. It has evolved over the past decade. And that's something that people need to jump on, hopefully, and embrace. Focus group members, including staff and board members, noted that the brand has been a bit tarnished by a trend of enrollment out by students. So I would consider that one of the big challenges to try and grapple with in storytelling for your school district. Next slide, Adam. Reprioritizing communication tasks. That's something that I think Marshalltown can really take a hard look at. It can be more strategic in the way it approaches communication rather than reactive. The diverse community makes it vital to consider how to target your messages and how you deliver communication to your very, very varied audiences. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach. And as I'm talking about these things, I'm giving you some hints about what I think are some of the most important communication challenges you have. And that is one of them, that the diversity of the community, and whether or not you are stepping up to the plate, acknowledging that in a communications way. You can better market, sorry, your value to families by maintaining high visibility that focuses on positive success stories and innovative programs to elevate your brand, okay? And I've talked about some of those programs already, but positive success stories is really important. We need to humanize Marshalltown a little bit more, I think, in my personal opinion. Next slide. So the report has a number of recommendations, major recommendations, six of them, to be more specific. And number one is to strengthen the value and usefulness of the strategic communication goals by including objectives and research-based strategies. In doing that, you would follow a four-step strategic PR planning process that a lot of school districts follow. RPIE means research, planning, implementation, and evaluation afterward. You know, you've done the work and then you evaluate the work. Use communication protocol questions to decide your decision-making. When you're making decisions, include communication and how are you going to communicate those decisions in everything you do. Create a crisis communications plan. I looked really hard, and maybe I just missed it, but, and I know COVID has really put sort of so many things on the back burner, but an updated crisis communication plan, I think, would be vital for Marshalltown. Include proactive issues management as part of communications planning. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. And then review the workload of the Director of Communications. And I know this has been talked about. This has been talked about through Adam, and I believe it was talked about through Adam's predecessor. And I think it's time to sort of review what the job description is, what the workload is, and how others can probably help. Sorry. Next slide. Internal communications and employee engagement should be a priority. I heard a lot about staff members saying that they were quote-unquote "the last to know" or quote-unquote "they hear from parents before they know what's going on" or "they hear from students." And that happens, and I hear that in a lot of school districts, so don't take it too, too seriously. But you want to define the communication role of all the administrators in your district. A lot of principals will say, in many districts, "I run the school. That's it. My job is not communications." It's, communications is everybody's job. And the more you farm it out, I think the more successful you will be. If you make it clear to administrators and principals that communications is part of their job, and here's how you can help us communicate, and here's how you can be the best ambassadors for our district, I think the more successful you will be. Publishing staff newsletters, yes, more work, sorry. Developing a list of staff resource contacts with their responsibilities. You have a lot of people who are probably experts in various things, science, technology, you know, all kinds of fields. And I have seen school districts create resource contacts where if you want a quote-unquote "expert's opinion" about something, you can go to that person either internally or even externally. Parents can ask questions. Regularly gather employee input on decisions that affect their jobs, and I can't stress that enough. And then, and I noticed that you've done a little bit of this recently, develop an employee recruitment campaign. And I'm going to say use video, and I'm going to say use video about a million times during this presentation, because there is nothing more effective than video, than video presentations, video testimonials, videos of kids. And that is going to be something that, and in the big report, it's mentioned many times. And in the big report, there are a lot of links to the way other school districts are doing this. Does it cost money? Yes, sometimes. Sometimes not. You can do it in-house. Many school districts will hire a contractor to do one video that will live on their homepage for, you know, six months, and maybe they'll hire that contractor back to do a new video. But it's forward-thinking video. It's not passive video. Recording a board meeting is passive video. Someone is sitting behind a camera, and they're just recording what's already happening. Active video is coming up with a script, an idea, working with teachers, working with students, putting things together, and then telling a wonderful story. Next slide. The third recommendation is to refine the social media presence to engage more stakeholders. So the content and the numbers on Facebook are really impressive. Both are impressive. The numbers on the Marshalltown Facebook page are very, very impressive for the size of the school district. I've seen a lot of school districts even bigger than Marshalltown with half the number of followers. So they're on social media, doing very well. So you should continue that. But one thing you can do a little bit better for engagement-wise is doing Facebook Live videos. And there are several examples in the larger report about superintendents who get on Facebook Live. It doesn't have to be the superintendent, Dr. Schutte. It can be a principal. But doing a live video of something going on in the district, or simply there is a superintendent in New York who I love, who during COVID especially, I would say, three nights a week, read a book out loud on Facebook Live. So you need to also develop protocols for responding to social media posts. Adam and I have talked about that. On the About page on Facebook, many, many school districts have the rules and regulations, you know, no attacks, no personal attacks, no profanity, no this, no that. If you don't follow these rules, we'll take you off the Facebook page, and you can do that. It doesn't happen very often, I have to say. Occasionally, there are negative comments on Facebook, but the rule of thumb tends to be, I call it the rule of the crowds. Usually, a negative comment will get shouted down by positive comments. And eventually, that negative comment will end up way at the bottom. Nobody even remembers what the conversation was about. And, and you'll see, that's been happening a lot, I think, with the mask, masking issues in our school districts around the county, I mean, around the country. And you can also, Adam can block someone if he wants to. I find I do that as a last resort on school district Facebook pages. But if someone is consistently negative every single day, several times a day, uses profanities, whatever, you can block them. And you can block them forever. So I would increase the use of video overall, you're going to hear me say that a million times, and promote the YouTube channel as much as possible. And Adam, I don't know if you merged those two channels yet, but there are, there were two YouTube channels at the time I was doing the audit, and it was confusing. So it might be wise to not only merge those two channels, but also categorize the videos. You can categorize each video, each set of videos, a Board of Education videos, Miller videos, you know, MHS videos, so that people don't have to go searching through 3,000 videos to find the one video they were looking for. In general, I would increase the use of video overall and vary the types of videos that you create, okay? And I know I'm talking time, and I know I'm talking possibly money, but video, I would say, is the number-one way to promote and market your school district. Next slide. Recommendation four is to update and redesign the district website. And I know there's been a lot of talk about this, and there's been planning. I do plan on sending to Adam and Dr. Schutte a list of all of the major websites that I see out there. I had to get this approved by Enspira. I didn't want to sound like I was promoting one or the other. But there are, I would say, a handful of website providers that specifically gear themselves towards schools, and they have some bells and whistles that can go with their website. For example, accessibility, which we just talked about. Some translation, okay? Translation is still getting there, okay? They can also provide a mobile app that matches the website and one that you don't have to scroll and scroll and scroll through. And it depends on what you purchase, you know, the package you purchase. But many of the website providers that I'm going to send to Adam and Dr. Schutte provide a lot of those extra bells and whistles. And you can buy the lowest package, the medium package, the highest package, whatever. So you need to identify the features of an ideal website for Marshalltown. You need to turn the website into a marketing tool in addition to a communication tool. If you have people who are enrolling their students in other district, nearby districts, I think marketing is a big, big deal for you guys. And it's not that different from communications, but you, you know, it takes a lot of forward-thinking, and you need to brag about your school district. That's what marketing is. I would expand the one webmaster model of the website into multi-webmaster, into a multi-webmaster model. And that means that some people in the district could be tapped for updating their own pages and putting their own news out and putting even their own photos out there so that school district pages or school pages can be as updated as the main district page. Early on in any discussion about a new website, I have worked with a number of school districts, and we always create a task force, okay, of people. It could be 10 people. It could be five people. We, in the task forces that I've participated in, we've had a couple of parents, a couple of principals, a teacher, the superintendent, the communications person, obviously. And we sit together, we look at other models, and then we decide. Ensure that your website content meets accessibility guidelines, which I already talked about, and try and add a mobile app with push notifications, meaning the mobile app is attached to the website. When something new is sent out on the website, you're going to get a push notification on your phone as well. Next slide, Adam. Enhance communication to better serve the needs and interests of non-English-speaking and minority families. And this goes without saying. I think it's time to develop a plan for engaging families, okay? Those with limited tech access, that came up in a couple of focus groups. Develop a key communicator network among non-English and non-native English speakers. That means, yes, another meeting of, you know, eight to 10 people who are vocal in those communities with some of your people to talk about what can we do for you, okay? There, you can also develop website landing pages for non-English and non-native English speakers, and there are examples in the reports. But again, if you would like this separately, I can send you the links of other districts that are doing that. They actually have landing pages that are completely in different languages, but give the readers the basics, you know, how to enroll, how to register, what about, you know, the academics. And I think that possibly you can get some help from the many wonderful social agencies and organizations that you have in Marshalltown. I would also create an international welcome center for new families, okay? It doesn't have to be permanent. It can be at the beginning of the school year, but I would set aside a space that is an international welcome center or an office that is an international welcome center for new families, preferably with people who can speak a number of languages. And it might be part-time. You might be able to get people from Embark on board with that. I'm not really sure, but it's one of my recommendations. Next slide. Incorporate marketing strategies into a strategic plan for Marshalltown. Now, marketing, people think of marketing as something that Nike does, you know, which Nike does. But if you look around you in some of your neighboring school districts, you can see some marketing going on. You need to define your brand. You need to highlight successes of your students with, I would suggest, points of pride campaigns. Here is so-and-so, this is, you know, it's labeled points of pride. It's put out on Facebook. It's put on the homepage, and the focus is on students. They're not on the adults. They're on the students. And continue that and make that a regular, regular thing, points of pride. How are we different from East Marshall or West Marshall? You can tell that story with your points of pride campaign. Build an outreach program with real estate agents. I once worked in a district that was one of the wealthiest school districts in New York, and twice a year, they had a real estate brunch. They put flowers on the tables. They served them food, and they did a presentation about their school district, what was great about it, what were the statistics, and they took a lot of questions from real estate agents. Next slide. So Enspira asks us to benchmark how a district is doing against its best practices nationwide. And the ratings are emerging, established, and exemplary. And I rated all of these categories as emerging, a comprehensive professional communication program, internal communications, parent-family communications, branding and marketing, crisis communications, and bond finance communications. Next slide. This is what you need to consider for implementing this 54-page report that I did, in that it is a team effort. It has to go beyond the main administrative office. It has to be something that everybody buys into, that everybody knows is important, not only, you know, not only to the, you know, administration, but to the teachers and to the students. So it has to be, it can't be done only by the communications staff, and I can't stress that enough. You've got one guy, and many school districts do have one guy or one woman or maybe one and a half people. If you're a giant school district in Texas, you may have a communications staff of 10 or 15 people. But I've seen many districts with a one-person office, but they have farmed out some of these responsibilities, and everyone else has bought into the importance of communications to help out that one person. There is a long-term effort. You're going to introduce new components when your budgets and your resources and your staff capacity allow it. your staff capacity allow it. So you have to tiptoe into some of these things that are suggested in the larger report. While maintaining your existing programs, it may not be feasible to undertake more than two to three of these major recommendations in a year. Okay? So this is, you know, this is tiptoeing. Okay? Are there any questions? I'd love to hear questions if you have them.
This is Darren, I've got a, I guess, a couple of comments. One, I loved your comment about communication being everybody's job. And, you know, one of the things that I've come to realize after five years in this district as well as, I've been in districts that have and don't have communications directors.
Yeah.
And in those districts that don't have communications directors, I think there's a greater understanding and willingness of, you know, all the building principals for sure, as well as other people, maybe in departments, take some roles and responsibilities as it relates to promoting, you know, what they're doing. And I think sometimes in districts that have communications directors, there's a feeling, as you alluded to, that that's their job.
Right.
Or, or, you know, I'll react to whatever's asked of me of that office. And so I've talked to Adam as well as his predecessor, you know, a number of times that there's only one of you. And in some way, shape, or form, we've got to figure out a way to create a network of people, cheerleaders, so to speak, at each building who are passionate about what they do, their buildings, you know, to help, as you said, spread the good news. The other thing is, as far as, you know, to me, it seems like one of the lower-hanging fruit that can significantly help a lot of our communication and marketing needs is the district website. And that's something that I don't profess to intimately know and understand, other than as a casual viewer of it, but what I do know is that's one of those areas that you get what you pay for. And, and also, a lot of times, you know, the recommendation for a website is going to be predicated largely on what the communications director is comfortable with, especially if they're the one and only author or person managing it. And so I think our current website, though better than our previous one, was significantly limited in its capabilities, you know, based on the comfort level of the person that was in charge of it at that time and the desire to keep the cost as low as possible. So I think we went with a more local, lower-cost provider who's got limited school, you know, they're mainly private sector oriented and small business probably.
Right.
Which was significantly less than many of the other companies that we looked at at that period of time. But I don't think there was a realization of how by spending more, it could have allowed us to operate a lot more efficiently, especially as it relates to managing all the different types of communications, because today, many of those websites will simultaneously allow you to post the social media and other, you know, things. So, just an observation, you know, based on my past experiences, I think most of our buildings and/or principals are really good about, like, weekly messages to their staff that provide them with information. I don't know that it always dovetails or aligns what, what district has provided them in order to get out, and that kind of lends itself to, you know, people feeling out of the loop sometimes. I'm not as 100% sure about the parent communication piece, and I know for myself as a parent, even though I would love to see what the district has to say, and I think we've worked really hard at the district level to try to get the good word out to the extent possible, but I think as a parent, more importantly, they want to hear from their building where their kids go to school. You know, that's where their, their heart and their mind is at relative to communications more so than necessarily what the district is pushing out. It probably needs to be balanced, better balanced, and I do think we've got differences, as you've alluded to, of information that gets to parents from the buildings.
Okay, right.
Darren, can I make a couple of comments? So I'll give you, like, a story about how my own marketing and my own company has evolved because it relates. At, at our company, I was the guy who made any sort of post to the world, because I didn't trust anybody else to, like, say it correctly, right? Like, so if it went on the website or if it went on Facebook, I physically had to do it myself. And it got, like, overwhelming, right? And so then you never do it, or you don't do a good job of it. And so what Evelyn had to say on slide 14 under recommendation number four, there's the third point, it says, "Expand one webmaster maintenance model into multi, into a multi-author model." And so I had to start to, like, trust others, you know, and for a control freak, that's kind of hard, right? And so, and then we started doing acquisitions in, like, faraway places. And these companies had their own website, and they had their own Facebook pages. And, like, I'd find out, like, we'd buy this company and three months later, well, they still have their own webpage, they still have their own Facebook page, they're still making posts to their own Facebook pages that shouldn't even exist anymore. And so, you know, then you got to go through all that. But you have a similar issue, like, you have one website in all the schools, and you have, like, a million Facebook pages. And so if there's a, if there's a way to centralize that, but decentralize, you know, expand trust to others, because I think if you go look at your Facebook pages, there's a lot of good information on there, but if there's a way to, like, have one Facebook page where Anson and you trust every principal to make posts to it or something, I think that you can be a force multiplier. Other than now, you've got this one over here and a few people like it, and this one over here and a few people like it, and the message is inconsistent and muddied. And so, one Facebook page, one website, but have lots of people you trust to make posts to.
Yeah, I think there's a cultural buy-in, buy-in here. I think that, you know, administrators, some administrators that I've run into over the years have said, "It's not my job." But other administrators have embraced it, or the superintendent has, you know, said, "You must embrace it." One person in the communications office can't be responsible for, you know, every, every school, and so how are you, as an administrator, going to reach out to your constituents? And I did see one school website page on the front page, and it had, in their news, they had a book list for 2017, and I think another item from 2017, and, and no updates after that. So there's a situation where, and yet, you know, at another district, like, at another school like Miller, you're going to see a lot more involvement. And I think that that dichotomy, you know, that, that range of communication is, is really wide. And somehow, we've got to push everybody into the same room and say, "You know, it's your job." And that's a hard thing to do, but with Adam's help, it's your job.
Yeah, and I think what, you know, what you referenced at Miller was timely in that, you know, currently, they have new leadership as of last year, and one of the priorities for that leadership team was to communicate effectively with their parents as they do with their staff. So they have what's called the Miller Minute or what have, which is a one-page, which often includes links, information that would be meaningful and important for them to make sure parents know. But they're probably the only building that does that. And again, you know, that's based on the current leadership.
Yes.
That's there.
Yes, right. It's all about, it usually is all about the administrator and their view of their job and whether or not, you know, they want to reach out to the public. So I think that is, that's a challenge everywhere, not just in Marshalltown. But I think, you know, jumping on board with something with the administrators, you know, getting them all into a room with Adam and yourself and talking about the communications portion of their job. I don't think you're going to have a lot of resistance to that. I think if you bring in the fact that you have to market the school district, that you are potentially losing some students, I think that, you know, that's one way of getting people on board.
You know, I, I don't know if I agree 100% with Evelyn's assessment of our website. As she was going through, "It's not responsive, you have to scroll a lot," I was going through the website on my iPhone, and I disagree that, you know, it fits to the screen, you can scroll, the menu's kind of optimized. Now, I will agree that the information on the website is sometimes hard to find. And so that, that part, but I don't know if that means, let's scrap the whole thing and start over again. I mean, we can redesign what information we have and what places on the website, but I think it is mobily responsive, at least my limited experience right here was. I also agree with what Evelyn said, is that a lot more use of video, like, in order of magnitude more is called.
And I can send Adam and Dr. Schutte a couple of links of how districts have used video to market themselves, and they've been extremely effective. They have hired, I know in two cases, they hired an outside video firm to do it, but I know that the cost was not prohibitive. I, I know that one video, as a matter of fact, I know it took them one day to make the video. But these are the kinds of evergreen videos that can stay on your homepage forever. They work for a very long time. In one particular video, they have, they talked to four different teachers from each school about what they love about teaching, and they have a lot of background of kids doing activities. And one of the things I was worried about, it's been up for about five years, is I'm hoping those teachers are still there. So, it's still up on their website, it's also on YouTube, and I'll send everybody a link. But, but that active kind of thinking before you make the video is so important, rather than having a passive video of a meeting going on or an event going on. You know, I, I could give you a million ideas probably of what you could do with students talking about the issues that confront them or their favorite class and their favorite teacher. And you can do it with alumni too, and I seen, I saw you did a recent alumni piece. But I, I do think that video is number one in terms of engagement and marketing. That's where you're going to get the biggest, you know, bang for your buck, is by making videos and promoting your district that way. The website, what I would say about the website is that most website companies now that serve school districts include a mobile app with push notifications. So a lot of what I heard from the focus groups was that they get most of their news from Remind, which is fine, but, and that's direct teacher-to-parent or teacher-to-student communication. But I think if you had a mobile app, you'd be surprised at how much it's used, because many, not many, but a lot of parents did say that they did not have computers in their homes, but they did have smartphones. And maybe there isn't a lot of scrolling, I did some scrolling, but I also don't use a lot of my school district mobile apps unless they send me a push notification, then I automatically and immediately open that up. And that comes with a lot of website companies, especially the ones that serve schools.
I think one of the challenges is that, you know, and Mike alluded to, you know, the willingness to give up autonomy and to let other, you know, to delegate to others. One of the problems is our website isn't real conducive to user-friendliness in that fashion. In fact, a lot of what we have to do, Adam can't do without, you know, providing the content to the provider and having them load it for us, let alone, you know, getting other people involved in it. So I think that's one of the things that we have to really look at if we're expecting principals, secretaries, or others to engage more in, you know, putting forth timely and meaningful content. We've got to have a fairly user-friendly way for them to do it.
Darren, I agree with what you said there. The, it just so happens that the website company that does my company's website is the same as the website company that does your website. And so I have been trained on their, like, how to update the website system, like, three times personally, and I still can't remember how to do it. I mean, it's like, it's like a pain in the, so I get it.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, I'll sign, I'd sign on for that. Not, not updating, because I don't know how to do it after being trained.
The website companies that I will send to Adam and Dr. Schutte, it's all about tech support. So, you know, the companies that school districts tend to like the most and use the most are the ones with the best tech support, that you can pick up a phone and you can call somebody and they can walk you through. There's a lot of planning involved, they have a lot of meetings with you to show you how to do things, especially with Adam, and that continues. There, you know, a lot of these companies, it's one phone call, and you get an answer or you get a tutorial, at least. So tech support is so important, and you can't just get a website provider and a website tool and then everybody, you know, the, the company walks away from you. That can't happen. And the companies that I'm listing, they have huge, really good tech support. They're also, you know, I hate to say this, but at the Enspra Annual Conference each year, which I hope someday Adam will be able to attend, they're all vendors there, and they're, you know, I consider them friends, and you can stop at their table at any time and ask them a million questions about how to do this and how to do that. So that's another way of doing it.
Evelyn, can I, can I ask you a question on something different? The, so you had some talk about our brand and what we are and who we stand for, and, you know, if I had to try and boil that down, it doesn't, it's not this mission and vision, it's more about preparing kids for living in a diverse world. That's sort of a, a brand and our strength, given our diversity, which is different than the districts that surround us.
Yeah.
And so that brand, if you highlight that in your marketing, can be powerful, but I don't know how to say this nicely, so many of the people that are open and rolling out of our district are doing it because of the diversity in our district. And so when we market our diversity as a strength, we are, like, sending a marketing message that those people that are open and rolling out, it's like the reason they're open and rolling out.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's difficult to, I think, well, do we pull the trigger on that? What do we, it, it's, it's a conundrum, and so...
Very, very difficult. I would, one of the things I... I would, one of the things I would highly recommend that Adam think about is a video with a lot of young, well, young in high school and all ages and just faces, faces of the kids and what they have to say, or faces of the kids with a narration. And you're going to see multiple kinds of faces. And that is, don't forget that it was also mentioned as a plus by the focus groups. They were proud of the fact that there was diversity. Now, reaching out to those people who are, you know, pulling their kids out for that reason, I do think that a really effective video would change a few minds. Not everyone, but you have to acknowledge who you are and you also have to celebrate who you are. And if there are good test scores in there, throw those in. You know, if there's the, the, there's the dual language program, throw that in. And so it will take a lot of thinking and a lot of planning, but I think that it, it really is something to celebrate. And, you know, for those people who are going to pull their kids out anyway, you know, you're not going to convince them, but you might convince some of them. And certainly your neighboring districts will notice what you're trying to do. So it is hard, it is a really, it's a double edged sword.
Knowing that this is a multi-year effort on our part and from what you have discerned about our district, what would you consider to be our two most important priorities?
I would say the two most important priorities are the website and the outreach to your diverse communities. You know, establishing that key communicator network, getting those parents involved if you can. Translation is so important. And there are, in my list that I will give Adam, is a list of translation companies. Some of the website providers do partner with translation companies with much more than just Spanish, is what I'm saying. So I would say and, and that international welcome center, things like that. Events that are specifically geared toward your non-English speaking community, if, if you can. Those are events that will take time to plan. But, and some kind of a landing page on the website for people who speak those many different languages.
So I would, I'd say the website, I'd agree with that. One other point, Theron, any organization I've ever been involved in, any kind, internal communications, when you ask employees about internal communications, they always say, oh, they suck, they're terrible, I don't know anything. I, in my own company, say, you're in the communications business and you don't communicate well. I hear it everywhere I've gone ever. So you could do 10 times more, you're going to hear the same message, you know? Second, the other part about, you know, of international students and translation. Evelyn, how does what your recommendations say jive with what you said earlier that those groups of parents and students sound to me like they're the most satisfied and happy with the education that they're receiving? So it's like, if we do a whole bunch more, aren't we just preaching to the choir?
Possibly, I, you know, I, I'm not really sure. I mean, they weren't 100% supportive. I mean, they, there were a few who complained. A lot of them, you know, said that they didn't have the technology or they didn't understand the language. And so what would happen, for a lot of them, they get their information from their own children. Their child comes home and tells them, you know, what's going on in the district or what's going on in their school or classroom. But the parent themselves, that's the only way they know. Unless they get remind and they get it translated. But with your numbers, I would definitely try and do more. I mean, you can't do everything, you cannot do everything. But a welcome center or even a landing page on the website in different languages would help, I think, that's a first step. Organizing a big event, that's maybe a second or third step, you know, who knows?
I think, you know, I think the, the branding or, I really think that the only way to overcome over time the negative perceptions that people place on diversity or differences is by being so overwhelming with the value added by being a student here, the opportunities that are available of students that eventually people recognize that what they're giving up by making that choice. And, you know, I think we've started down a road of, of hitting on some pressure points with the surrounding districts. I think there's a lot of them chasing to stay up with the Joneses, so to speak, even though they don't have the same capacity that we do for different things financially and otherwise. But it's, it's a long road to get people who predicate their dis- When people are making these decisions, for the most part, their kids aren't in school yet. So it's as they're heading into preschool or kindergarten and they're not looking at the end of the road necessarily in terms of what they're passing up in middle or high school, for example, where I think the differences are the greatest. So I don't know if we can ever get there with that messaging because a lot of people like it very simple, like based on a test score or a Zillow score or something like that when, although that's one piece of the puzzle, they, they seem to think it's a big piece. But it's one of many, many pieces, you know, that we have to communicate out the value added.
Right.
And I think some of this can be done through what you're talking about with the videos. Because.
Sure, Mike. Sure, Mike.
Talk about technology, oh, that helps. I, I just met with a young person who's thinking about running for school board and she's, she's got a preschool child and she was talking about Marshalltown has a lot to offer, and I've heard you say that so many things, times there. And if we were to have a brand, that would be it. We are the largest school system for about 50 mile radius and we do have a lot to offer that some of the smaller schools simply cannot duplicate because of their size. We also have a lot to offer because we have this diverse population and we have the bilingual and trilingual certification programs in heritage Spanish. There's just so much here that we can offer. And I think the more we can showcase that and students being successful and the more we can work with the community college and BBU and the business community to promote the things that are working in our vocational programs that we're putting into place, I think the more we can do to keep people with us. The public library is one of the resources she brought up. They've got some preschool programs that she's been taking advantage of. We also have immigrant allies through the public library. They can help us with some of this outreach that you're talking about.
Right. Yeah. Those are all great ideas. And again, if, you know, one of the most effective ways of telling a story, again, I have to pound it over my own head, but, but video. People talking about it. You know, immigrant allies, people talking about that, why, why they're doing it, why, how it helps. You know, Adam's going to kill me for, for talking about video so much. But it really is so effective and can set you apart from some of your neighboring school districts. So you can accentuate the positive of that. Maybe not change all minds, but at least go in that direction, you know?
And Evelyn, this is Adam, I, so my understanding too is that, I'm trying to remember where I heard it from recently, but the most effective videos are sometimes what, like 15 to 30 seconds long? Okay, so that's different than editing and shooting and putting together a 10 minute video. So that's, you know, when talking about adding more video and sharing more video, that's where my mind goes.
Yeah. And, you know, they can be 15 to 20 seconds long and, and still be very effective. And if you do multiple videos of 15 to 20 seconds, there are a lot of different stories you can tell. And the Facebook page is very effective, but the one thing I have noticed is the lack of videos, the lack of feeling like you're right there. There are a lot of posts and they're engaging. They, you know, you may disagree with me, Adam, on this, but overall, I get the feeling that a lot of the posts are kind of top down posts and that may not be true. But if you're walking around hallway with your cellphone and you're videotaping, and I know a lot of superintendents who do that and then get it posted to Facebook or Twitter, you know, they get a lot of hits. They get a lot of likes because it's kids in action, you know, or it's teachers teaching in front of a class. You bring them into the classroom rather than sort of the more kind of official announcements that are made. And I, I have nothing against official announcements, they have to be made. But sprinkling that with the humanity that goes on in these school buildings every day, every minute, I think will be really effective, humanizing Marshalltown more than it's being humanized right now.
Everything I always read about video five years ago was that you never made a video more than three minutes in length. So if you want on my webpage, all our videos are like two minutes and 58 seconds, right? Because I thought, well, it can't be more than three minutes. And TikTok and, you know, your Facebook feed and your Instagram stories have like shortened people's attention span. So I think now it's like 30 seconds tops, no more than 30 seconds. So used to, what was three minutes is now 30 seconds.
Right. But you can do a 30 second video for Facebook that is actually a three minute video on your website somewhere. So it's the same video, it's just truncated down for Facebook. Because, yeah, you're right, the attention span is not there, you know? By the way, I would get rid of the Pinterest page. You know, you may disagree with me, but it's only got 122 followers and it doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't need to be there, you know? And combine the two YouTube pages if you haven't done that already.
Well, it seems to me that the three minute video would be what you were talking about that we'd, you know, somewhat professionally make about the district. And then 30 second videos would be everything out there to help support what's said in that three minute video, you know, examples of it.
Right, I agree, yeah.
You know, your, your Pinterest page could be kind of cool. Like if you, if your family in consumer science folks posted all of the things that they are making food wise, recipes on the Pinterest page. Right? I mean.
Or artwork or.
Yeah.
Projects.
All that stuff. So you, you know, you could have cool uses of Pinterest. Not that you can't replicate that stuff on, on Facebook and Instagram.
Yeah, you could use it in very cool ways. I use it a lot personally, but you need people who are actually going to upload the content. You know, you need people who are into Pinterest. And there may be plenty of teachers who would be willing to post on Pinterest and, and, you know, places to visit and what we're learning in social studies, you know, that kind of thing.
So.
Buy in.
Our kids live on Snapchat.
I know.
And so why, why don't we live there too?
Good question. I think a lot of districts have not gone to TikTok or Snapchat because they're scared of those platforms. Now, some districts have, and I can give you a list of those districts and, and the links to their Snapchats, especially Snapchat. TikTok, I think, is very effective. But again, you know, you'd have to try it out and see how other districts are using it. One of the things about Instagram is, I've seen a lot of districts do, is they will give the Instagram account to a student for a day. And they call it, I forget what they call it, Instagram for a day. That student has to sign something that says they're not going to put anything bad on the Instagram site, but they get it for the whole day. And they talk to other students or they'll show what's going on in their classroom. And that's how you get that age group, the high school age group, more involved. It's really fun, Instagram for a day is really, really fun and it's worked.
I love that idea, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I think one of the challenges with Snapchat is that, you know, it's there and then it's not. I mean, it disappears.
Well, you know, they've got the stories, I mean, they sort of invented the story, right? Snapchat is, they like the Instagram stories or your Facebook stories. They invented that. So, you know, you just go to it when you want to and you can see that, you know, the kids, "Marshalltown High School A Day, you know, here's my story." It'd be kind of cool. I'm only on Snapchat so I can, you know, see what kids are doing.
Me too.
I like that snap map where I can see where they are too. You don't have to worry about that yet, Sean, but you will.
Well, Evelyn, so we have a journal, a new journalism teacher at the high school and one idea, we've already talked a few times, he and I, one idea I had, kind of going to the sharing positive news, Bobcat Pride style stories, was to utilize those students, their skills, help them develop those skills. And, you know, this teacher who I've been talking to is very supportive of that. He himself obviously has a, you know, journalism, mass communication style of degree and that's exactly the skill set that they're going to be developing in that class. So there's still, we still have to do some talking about what, how exactly that fits into the curriculum and, you know, the details of it. But that's another, sort of this, on the theme that I think I'm getting from both this report and from some of the ideas being shared. As far as sort of farming it out and, and allowing students and or staff to help with.
Yeah, great idea, great idea, yeah. Everybody can buy into this, or almost everybody. Any other ways I can help you?
In your, in your report, you mentioned a "Let's Talk" feature, what is that?
Oh, that is a button that is provided by a lot of the website companies that I will be listing for you. And what it does is it, a lot of people put it on the bottom of their homepage and it's a listening thing. It's, it's a chance for, for somebody to fill out a question that, they can do it anonymously, they can do it with their name. But a question that is then forwarded to the communications office and they farm it out to the right person to get the right answer. And a lot of the districts that use it are, love it, absolutely love it. Do you occasionally get, you know, stupid questions or questions that, you know, where somebody just wants to start an argument? Sure, but most often it's used in a positive way. And it's always featured on the homepage, usually at the bottom of the homepage or three quarters of the way down.
That's, that's not unlike how our current Facebook Messenger, I think, functions with, with the Facebook pages. It's, it's, it sounds exactly like, I, I think if it, I think it would be a good idea for the website if we can have, especially if we can formalize a, you know, the network of how those questions get farmed out and answered and, you know, maybe set up some written down protocols about that. I would, I would like to do that.
Well, she suggested a list of experts that you would have.
Right, right, right.
Sure. One thing I will mention as an aside is that because of the website provider that you use, the board report and the things. you use, the board report and the things that Adam produces, and Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, are created in WordPress.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Yeah. So, you know, the other thing about that, and WordPress has its limitations. It really does. It's, it's sometimes very hard to use. You may be better than I am at using it, Adam. But a lot of the website providers have their own sort of side thing that is attached to the website and is a NE newsletter, you know, just like your board reports are and Bobcat, the Bobcat News, Bobcat Headlines. And they're much, much easier to use and better looking than WordPress is because they provide templates for you. They provide clip art for you if you need it. And so the look is a lot more professional and you don't have to mess with WordPress, which is one of my least favorite things to do. But, but if you're used to using WordPress, then, you know, maybe you don't have to do that. But, and they do have links, you know, just like yours have links to other, other e-newsletters to read. And so there are a lot of them out there and they usually partner with one of the website providers, but not necessarily. I have a list of others that are just as good. And there's something called Smore, which is actually an e-newsletter, you know, tool, but it becomes a flyer. And so it can be printed by anybody. And it is also cataloged forever on your website, on a back page. And all of your Smore flyers are there for any parent to open up and look at again because they lost it or their child didn't bring it home or, you know, that kind of thing. So Smore is something that I would highly recommend just because it's being used a lot and it looks so good and is effective in reaching out to your audience.
We're blown away with newsletters. We have WordPress. We have Smore. We have Microsoft Words turned into PDFs. We have so many freaking newsletters that I don't read any of them. Like seriously. I mean, Lisa Stevenson used to send those smores every Friday and, you know, there was good stuff on there. I just couldn't read it. It was just too much, you know?
Yeah.
And so we have, we have newsletter overload. And so I don't know.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
So we used to do newsletters and I paid lots of money to have this beautiful professionally done thing. And I'd get all these statistics about who opened it. I'd send it to 8,000 people and like 14 had opened it, you know? And so I started taking the same stories in the newsletter and I'd make a Facebook post about it. I'd get 150 likes, 200 likes for nothing. And so I, I just, in my personal experience, newsletters, the value of newsletters is highly overrated.
Right. Right. Now, with Smore, what I've noticed is that a lot of PTAs are using those as well with district permission because they have a lot of information to get out. So, and those can be cataloged and archived on the site so a parent can look at one of those flyers anytime they want. So event flyers, things like that. But, yeah, I mean, that's just one of 100,000 things you could do.
So Evelyn, to Mike's point, what, do you have any ideas? And maybe this is something that we, you know, you would share and have resources on and we can have more discussions about it. But are there any ideas off the top of your head kind of that would help us not overload people with too much information from too many different sources as far as the newsletters go?
Yeah, I, you know, oh gosh. That's a tough one because I know that I talked to Adam once about the amount of board, official board information that comes out. And in working with other school districts, there isn't as much official board information that comes out. There might be one summary a month. Some boards send out their own e-newsletter that, you know, is brief and mentions the major things that took place or COVID, for example, a lot of boards have weighed in on COVID. I don't know. I mean, I don't want to change what you're doing too much, but I do think that top-down communications is not as effective as across the board communications. Meaning everyone in the district or, you know, as many people in the district as you can get involved. Each school does its own thing. The board summary possibly could go from two a month to one a month. But, and the only reason I say that is because it's on YouTube. So, you know, when people want to look at a board meeting on YouTube, chances are, what if they're out on, you know, one of your nights? They're going to go back to YouTube anyway. And a lot of boards that I work with, they will have a live stream of their board meeting. They'll put it on YouTube. They will not summarize it. So they will have, people will go to YouTube to, you know, to attend the board meeting, quote unquote, "attend the board meeting." But the board itself does not summarize as much as you guys do. You do a lot of board work, which is good, but you only have so many resources in your communications department. So, but, you know, I wouldn't make that a major recommendation, you know, as something to think about down the road possibly.
You know, our, our board meetings are all electronic in that everything is like, for example, accessible to Adam, you know, as of Thursday prior to a Monday board meeting. I think there are ways you can be more efficient about doing those board reports. Because the one thing that I'll say, and I've been in four districts, I've never seen a district whose employees spend as much time as ours do reading those reports because they're not going to come and attend a two-hour board meeting.
Right.
If they don't get it through that board report, they might get glimpses of it in the newspaper because we do have pretty good coverage of key or, you know, the top topics that would engage people in the paper the next day. But I, personally, I think that's a pretty valued communication tool from our board and/or administration to our employees for sure. And I think by not doing it, you would have more people talking about lack of communication personally. But, but I think there could be ways to be more efficient and effective and maybe take the standpoint that less is more by simply sharing key points or decisions made. And then if people want to dig deeper, like you said, they could go into that specific part of the board meeting, you know, that's taped. But I'd be, I'd be real fearful of repercussions of not having that. And to Mike's point, I think a lot of times with newsletters, you know, what's important is who's the intended audience and, you know, how do we prevent people from being overloaded with information? So for example, each Friday or weekend prior to a board meeting, I provide a news and notes. So it's every two weeks that in many ways helps support the type of information that's going to come before the board on Monday night or it keeps the board up to date on items of interest throughout the district, just so that they don't get caught off guard, you know, at the grocery store or something about hearing about something for the first time. And I think that's an important, first and foremost, that communication goes to the board, but it also goes to my administrative team so they don't get caught off guard or feel out of the loop on something that's being talked about at the board meeting in the event it hasn't come up in a prior meeting. And then to Mike's point, you know, if he's also getting the newsletters that come from the Director of Learning, which, you know, I mean, our administrators know if, if anything is of importance for the board to know, it should be put in the board news and notes that they get every two weeks, not to be read in a separate newsletter, which was really, really informative and many of our board members probably liked reading all of that. But for the purposes of the board, it wasn't really a need to know, you know? And in many cases, that was more in the weeds than they need to know because it was really designed for teachers and teacher leaders and, you know, probably for the most part. So I think we, to your earlier point, we have to really be strategic and smart about what communications are necessary and who the audiences for those communications are.
Right. Yeah. And, and these, those are my first impressions and every board does it differently. But many boards I've worked with don't do as much as you guys do with the board reports. They pretty much post it on YouTube. They have it live and then boom, that's it. And, and then you've got to scroll through a lot of stuff to find the one thing you're looking for, which also is not, you know, that's also not a good solution. But I think that's something that maybe you guys can figure out with Adam's help. Adam, you don't feel like your, most of your time is spent on board material, do you?
No, certainly not. No, not most of my time. I think, I think when we were talking about this, the board report specifically previously, I remember one idea I think that came up was to shorten the descriptions of what occurred, which is something I can do on my end and then maybe adding a timestamp within, I know you can usually link a timestamp specifically within a video. That way they don't even have to, you know, scrub through an hour and a half long YouTube video to find it. That could be a good solution. That wouldn't drastically change really much of anything except making it a little bit more efficient.
And if you did those bullets with the timestamps and that was on a front frame of that YouTube video, so someone clicks onto it, "Oh, I need to look at 5:11," and they can go right ahead to it.
Yeah. That way they're going to what they're most interested in.
Right. When you talked about internal communications, the last two, three, probably three, three administrators I worked for did do something within their buildings. This is not from central offices. This would be building level that I found really helpful. And that was when they would send out once a week, they would send out just a very short memo that told us where they were going to be in the buildings, alerted us if there was going to be fire drills or whatnot. And just, just the things that we really needed to know so that we weren't the last people in the district to find things out. And, you know, and it was not lengthy because Mike's right. I mean, teachers have 22 minutes for lunch. I don't even think they get that anymore. They used to have 22 minutes for lunch. I think that's been erased. I mean, really, they're eating lunch while they're walking around the cafeteria with a sandwich in their hand, watching kids. They don't have a ton of time, but that was really helpful to have that. And it was something I could read in less than two minutes.
And all of our buildings do that. They all provide staff with weekly newsletter that's one page usually.
Yeah. It, it was really helpful.
Evelyn, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Oh, my pleasure. My pleasure. It was a joy working with Adam.
We have lots of information to continue our discussions. And if the board has further questions, I'm sure that Adam or Dr. Chitty will be able to get in touch with you.
Okay. Definitely. Definitely.
Thank you.
I like talking to the both of them, so it's been fun.
Good night.
Thanks.
All right. Good night. Take care, everyone.